Different.
We can go ahead and start, Chair Terry.
Alrighty. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the special Springs Municipal Advisory Council meeting of October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and we're starting at six thirty P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have one item on this agenda, and we will take public comment on items that are not on the agenda as well. And would you like to announce Spanish interpretation, Karina?
Thank you, Chair Terry. Para las personas que desean escuchar esta reunión en español, contamos con interpretación al español. Por favor, vaya a la parte baja, la derecha de su pantalla, y haga clic en el icono global titulado "interpretation" o "interpretación". Seleccione español o Spanish cuando haga clic, y automáticamente estará escuchando en español, y gracias a nuestro intérprete Juan Morales. Thank you, Chair Terry.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Prat, would you like to do a roll call?
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Lombard?
She's here.
You're muted. Okay, you're here. Councilmember Reyes? No? Councilmember Alcaraz? No? Councilmember Wenders?
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Hardiman?
Here.
And I am here, and Maite is here.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I just want to invite all council members to participate this evening and make sure that we all have space to voice our thoughts, opinions. I'd also like to thank K S V Y for broadcasting and their tech support, Lynn Marie, always the amazing minute taker that you are, and Juan for our interpretation services. So if there is any public comment on agenda, on items not appearing on the agenda, we will take those comments.
Any members of the audience who wish to make a public comment, please use the raised hand feature, and you will be allowed to make your comment. I don't see any raised hands, Chair Terry, but I am seeing Councilmember Alcaraz.
Yes.
Promoting him.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I want to acknowledge we have Gary Johnson from Silver Valley Fire in our audience tonight.
Great, thank you. So the purpose of this meeting is to create a ad hoc committee for the proposed plaza. The discussion and creation of a Springs community plaza ad hoc to attend upcoming meetings and report back to the council. The ad hoc is to represent the council views on the community plaza. So that is our purpose tonight. I can tell you the dates of the meeting that are proposed at this point. Tuesday, November fifteenth at Flowery, that'll be in English. Thursday, November seventeenth at Flowery in Spanish. And a third meeting to present the proposal with three options will come in two thousand twenty-three. So our, really, we have a dual purpose here, is who would like to represent us in these meetings? And what is our statement? Or what if we choose, I can't imagine, we're not going to choose to be represented, but there could be that, that is an option to not create an ad hoc. And the other goal that we have is what is our statement that we would like? What's the stance of the Springs MAC on this proposed plaza? So, Karina, can we take this in two pieces? Can we establish the ad hoc? Or do we do the state, should we do the statement first, or what's your suggestion?
The order in which you do it is up to the council, but I would suggest splitting it up and deciding on who wants to be a part of the ad hoc, and then what is the message you want to deliver?
Okay, thank you. Hannah, did you have a comment?
A question, could you please read those three dates again?
Sure, absolutely. Tuesday, they're all at six P M. Tuesday, November fifteenth. Thursday, November seventeenth. And then a yet-to-be-determined in two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you very much. And those are, one is in English and the others in Spanish, is that correct as well?
The first one is in English, the fifteenth.
Okay.
And the seventeenth is in Spanish, and they're both at Flowery.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarifying question. Iris?
Will the meeting at Flowery be translated into English? Or will there be a synopsis in English?
I can't answer that.
What was the question, Iris?
Will the, will the, the meeting at Flowery for, in Spanish, be translated into English? Or will there be a synopsis of it, of the meeting in English? Because I would expect that the opinions there would be different than the ones, at least not, not entirely the same.
Sorry. What I can share is that the property owner is hired, has hired a facilitator for these public meetings, and they do provide English and Spanish services. I believe they will have interpretation available at both meetings, but the English one will be facilitated primarily in English and the Spanish in Spanish. They will have a synopsis of what was discussed at each meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that would be important. Can't imagine that they wouldn't, wouldn't do that. So it's accessible. Want to make sure our community is together and not divided. Hannah?
So I have some confusion over what was said, which I heard as a potential conflict of information, or just conflicting information maybe, but I could have misunderstood. From what Karina said at our last MAC meeting, I understood that the Matsons are the developer of this project. From what Susan Goran said, it seemed like she made a statement saying if the community is not pleased with them, they're not necessarily the developers of the plaza. I'd like clarification there because if we're develop, that's important to know.
I don't know that I'm the right person to make a clarification on that. But what I can tell you is, yes, the Matson Group is the current developer, and they're working with the county, and the county has made a recommendation for them to do community outreach. They absolutely want to hear what the community has to say and what their interest is in a community plaza. Based on what they hear from the community, they will come back with three proposed options sometime in two thousand twenty-three. Their hope is that one of those three options will be to the liking of the community. If none of them are, they will continue, I believe, to work on their options to hopefully come up with something that the community is pleased with, and they can move forward with that project. I can't speak to the future, they may change their mind. If they don't see enough community interest, they could. Again, I, I don't know what they would like to do in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like what I hear you saying is that the Matsons are the developer, and it's up, we have the opportunity to provide some input. Okay, so I think, I think, I think it would be a good idea to establish the ad hoc first, and then we can work on the message. Let's knock the simpler one out of the way. So I don't know what the interest is, I'll just kind of ask for a show of hands to see who is interested. We need three people, can't have more than three, who are, might be interested in attending definitely those two meetings and likely a third meeting, and then providing information to us as a MAC. Any interest? Hannah? Joe? Is there a third? Iris? Is there anyone who is dying to be on this committee that did not get the chance to raise their hand? Okay, so if I could get a motion to establish an ad hoc with Hannah Parat, Iris Lombard, and Joe Hardiman as the MAC representation at this meeting?
I'll make a motion for the ad hoc.
Naming Hannah Parat.
Those three members, Hannah, Iris, and Joe Hardiman, as the representatives for the MAC.
Is there a second?
Hi, second.
Okay, Jesus, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, we have our ad hoc. Thank you three for volunteering, I really, really appreciate it. Okay, the next step is, I know that there's a lot of feelings about this proposed plaza. I think, I believe that there's probably as diverse feelings about this proposal in this group as there is in the community. So I just want to start this by saying this is where we are, and we have an opportunity to provide some input. We don't know where this will go, and we don't know how this will turn out. But is it an opportunity to provide provide some voice to our, to the people who are going to develop this plaza? Because there was a vision for this plaza in the past, there has been for a long, long time. And I just, I, I'm just cautioning us to make sure that that voice is heard and that we're able to present our needs and wants in a way that they are accepted and understood by the developers. So that's all I'll say on that. And I'm wondering, and here's the can of worms, what you all are thinking about what message we want to deliver in this? And should we go out and get some more information from our community before we step into this, there's not a lot of time? But and then there is a plan that does exist. The Ross, Michael Ross, I think, they developed a plan years ago, and I believe that that's still in existence somewhere that might be worth looking at as well. So I'll stop there. Jesus, did you have a question or comment?
No, I was actually going too fast. But I was already thinking about a message that could be part of the whole message, but I would like others to contribute or give their opinions first.
Thank you. Welcome, Mari Carmen. Mari, we've just elected or nominated Hannah, Iris, and Joe to the ad hoc. Do you have a strong desire to be on the ad hoc?
No, I'm, and actually, part of me, I'm just getting in. And I, Karina didn't tell me what it was about, but honestly, right now, I'm not. I need to look at my computer, I'm just getting home.
Okay.
Can you? It was the ad hoc for
the, the plaza that the Matsons are proposing.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Jesus?
Yes. Could we, if it's possible, that someone that understands, like, Spanish, like Mari Carmen, yourself, or Maite, or me, could attend the Spanish meeting? Instead of one of the already elected council members? So that there is a little more understanding, or if there is any, like, I'm sure they know, but that everything, just make sure that everything will be clear.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, Jesus. Do you have any ideas, Karina, about how we can manage that? Do we have someone step out and Jesus, Mari Carmen, or myself step in? Or do we? Can we send a fourth person to the Spanish one?
You're putting me on the spot right now without consulting with county council, I wouldn't know how to respond to that. My recommendation would be to put this back on the table and add a member who is bilingual, and maybe ask someone to remove themselves from the ad hoc until we know if we can be swapped in.
Okay. So those who were just selected to this position, what do you think about putting a Spanish-speaking member on the count, on the, on the committee, and one of you stepping back? Iris?
I think it's a great idea, and I would step back.
Okay, thank you, Iris. Well, Jesus, Mari Carmen, and Maite? Which one of us? I can tell you right now, well, which one of us wants to attend and represent the Spanish-speaking?
What days will it, what day will it be?
Thank you, Mari Carmen, November fifteenth and November seventeenth, both are at six P M at Flowery.
Does, does, do people have to attend both? That's the other question.
I, I personally think you do, there's nuances in both of those that are important to be, to hear both conversations, I think, would be my perspective.
And there'll be translation, but we're not sure if there's translation to English, or there will be.
We think that there will.
Okay, okay.
I would, I, I would only be able to make the fifteenth, so I can't commit to both.
The fifteenth is the English one.
Oh, the seventeenth, yeah, I, I would not be able to commit.
I'm wondering if just for the Spanish-speaking one, a member could swap out for just that meeting? If that's an option? Just so we don't violate our quorum, but we have a bilingual person at that meeting in order to pick up the more nuanced conversation.
My recommendation, Chair Terry, if I may, if you have three council members, one, with at least one who is bilingual, I don't believe all three council members need to attend both meetings.
Okay.
Ad hoc can have a meeting and discuss what was discussed at both meetings. So as long as you have one Spanish-speaking council member attend the Spanish meeting, and whoever can attend the English one.
Okay. I just think it's important to hear both sides. I, I, I'm bothered that it's split into Spanish and English, first of all. So that it should be, I just am, because then we're dividing community, right? Are we trying to bring people together? So that's why I think it's important, that's my personal opinion, that people attend both. So I think we're back to swapping out Iris's seat for a Spanish speaker. I cannot attend both meetings, I can't. I have commitments on those evenings in my job. So that leaves and Mari Carmen can't do the fifteenth.
No, she can't do the seventeenth.
Oh, she can't do the seventeen.
The Spanish one.
Yeah. Jesus.
Would you be able to make the seventeenth?
Yes, I'll make the the effort to attend the meeting on the seventeenth, Thursday the seventeenth.
If, if you can go on the, on the seventeenth, I can, I can go. And do I need to be in the ad hoc to be able to go to the, to the Tuesday meeting?
I don't know, now I'm super confused about what we need to get accomplished.
It, it seems to me that anyone can go to the public meeting. You just wouldn't be representing the ad hoc or the MAC.
That is correct, Iris. Any member of the community is able to attend. The reason we're creating an ad hoc is to avoid any ground act violation. Should there be more than a quorum present at a public meeting? So this is why it was suggested for the, the Springs MAC to create an ad hoc specifically to represent the MAC at these meetings. And just a couple of things, I, I have been in conversations or in meetings with the developer, the county, just sort of being a fly on the wall, and I know that one of the reasons they decided to have English and Spanish independent meetings was specifically to make the monolingual Spanish-speaking community feel more comfortable, rather than joining a meeting where there's Spanish interpretation, they can freely express their opinions in their language. The third meeting is, my, my understanding is, will be in English with Spanish interpretation specifically.
Yeah, they could run the meeting in Spanish with English interpretation too. So.
I don't know, Jesus, would you be able to? Would Jesus then be able to be in the ad hoc? And then we can just attend as a community member? And provide notes, potentially?
So what I think.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
No, no, go.
I said, I, I don't think you can provide notes, because then that's beyond the ad hoc coming together. So the three that are the ad hoc are the only three that can come together and discuss what was spoken about, what our messaging is, where we want to go.
And so right now, it sounds like what's on the table is Hannah, Joe, and Jesus, and Jesus only attending the seventeenth. Is that my understanding? Is that accurate? Hannah?
So we're changing the members of the ad hoc to Hannah, Joe, Jesus, but Jesus will only attend the seventeenth, is that accurate?
That's, I think, what the proposal is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, if everyone's. All three members do not need to attend both meetings, because you are an ad hoc, and you will have the opportunity to discuss. And then you're presenting to the council at your next meeting.
Okay.
Which is December.
Well, should I make a motion then to correct our ad hoc for the Matsons Plaza presentation to Hannah, Joe, and Jesus?
I make the motion.
Great.
Well, I second that, I don't know.
Yeah, you did it, you did it.
You got it. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you, Iris, for stepping down, and Jesus, thank you for stepping up.
And if I can, if it's possible, I will try and make an effort to attend both. It won't be a conflict of interest, since it's only three of us.
Thank you, Jesus.
I will do the same, obviously, if for some reason there is not translation at the seventeenth, I will probably see myself, I'll plan to go to vote.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think it's important. Okay, so we have an ad hoc. Now, what is the, what is our statement, what is our message, what do we want expressed at this meeting on our behalf?
Well.
Hannah, and then Jesus.
Okay. This is just a logistics thing, that area is one of, I live right there. It's one of our exit, our main exits, you know, and if there's crazy construction going on there during like fire times, or just or just every day-to-day traffic, I, I would like to know what their timeline is for this project, and how it would impact the surrounding roads. So just logistics, what's the timeline? What impact will it have on Boys Boulevard? My understanding is that there's a high-powered gas line in that area, what's going on there? My understanding of the project as it stands is that there's going to be extensive digging that will have to go on, and is this going to be a year's project, two years? What's, what's the timeline? And how, how can we trust them to keep to it?
Jesus?
Oh, my, my, I, well, I hope this is just a part of contribution to the whole entire statement, but I would like to say that the efforts of the Matsons and the county to build or create a plaza in the Springs reflect more the community and not Ken Matson's ambitions. We all know that he's a true capitalist, and he likes economic development, and somehow, I would like to say, we do too, but we like that the plaza will be in a more beneficial for the community than for his business.
Thank you. Iris, and then Celeste?
Actually, probably people are going to want to throw darts at me after this, but I feel rather strongly that we should not be even asking to anymore to have the plaza developed there. It's not really an appropriate site, Hannah's concerns about traffic and everything make lots of sense to me about it disrupting what Ken Matson's, or whoever represents them stated desires are, are to create an underground parking garage in that location, and then put a a podium, as Susan Goran said, on top of it with something that's looks like, you know, a, a nice place to walk through. And then he's going to invite in food trucks in the circle in front of the half-circle building, and he hopes to attract small businesses in the place where Uncle Patty's was, and perhaps the gas station. The plaza, you know, what we've hoped for, we've outgrown that area in the amount of time it's taken to develop it. I would really like to see the possibility, the reality, of taking the money that was basically, it's supposed to still be there for developing the plaza and receiving some compensation from from Matson, I presume, for developing a, so that it could be used to develop a plaza elsewhere. He would be able to do as he wished there, he would only be negotiating with the county. I, I know that's not what we wanted in the past, but it's not a great location for a plaza anymore, it's not big enough, it's not nearly big enough for a real community gathering. Anytime we had music there, it could be drowned out by traffic, or it just wouldn't be pleasant, it wouldn't be a good place for speakers, because it would have to be amplified so much. I, I know that finding a, a place of suitable size in the, in the Springs area is, is a tough call. And the other idea would be to have more than one location, three or four smaller areas that could be local plazas. I, you know, and, and it frustrates me that basically, the Springs MAC is going to be, and the people of the Springs, whom we represent, are going to be negotiating in such a, a power imbalance situation. The Matson Corporation, or whatever they call themselves, I'm not even sure. Because it seems to change. Is so wealthy, they've bought roughly eighty properties in the valley, and most of them are being unused, and it's taking so long for the ones that he says are being developed to happen, that it is detrimental to the community. The other heavy hitter, of course, is the county and the planning department, they have way more power than we do. This, when I look at relationships, I judge them by the power that's associated, and we don't, you know, the people of the Springs really don't have much power, and I would really like to see the opportunity for us to develop a plaza in a place that was more appropriate.
Thank you, Iris. Celeste?
Yeah, so I have some similar concerns. I, I am concerned about the flow of traffic. Because not only is it going to, would the construction disrupt that Boys Boulevard route that people take, especially taking their kids to Altamira, and the kids walking to and from Altamira, but also Highway twelve itself. It would impact it on both sides. Again, on Highway twelve, our students have bus, a bus stop in front of Valley of the Moon Apartments. That means a couple of times a day, kids are going to be getting That means a couple of times a day, kids are going to be getting on and getting off in the middle of a construction zone. I'm also concerned that the area isn't big enough, that we have outgrown that space. But I'm also very concerned about the families in, in the community that live in Valley of the Moon Apartments, who would be deeply impacted for a really long time with construction, especially construction that starts and then stops for however long it stops, because that seems to be the pattern with, with this company. That construction begins and ends and pauses and goes on and on and on, and that's asking an entire apartment complex of low-income families to basically tolerate living around this kind of project, and I don't know that that is really a fair ask. I think that the families that, that live in those apartments already tolerate, you know, more than they should have to. Especially for the amount of, of, you know, rent that they're paying to live there. They, they shouldn't have to live like that, and so I am concerned about their well-being. And, and I am concerned about the power balance. And then the issue that many, many in our community have brought to members of the MAC and have been very vocal about is let's say it's built, and let's say it's there, how welcome does all of the community feel there? Because of who owns it. And I'm sorry, but I think that's an uncomfortable conversation that needs to be had because it's a conversation that members of our community have brought forward. And, and we have to consider how all members of our community feel. And that they're all made to feel welcome in all of our spaces here in the Springs. So those would be some of the things that, that would stand out to me as, as issues when we're looking at our message and and looking at, at what do we want to say as a MAC? Again, we don't own the property, so it's not up to the MAC what is done with it. But we do, as my taste said, have an opportunity for input. And so we could give that input for what it's worth.
Thank you. Hannah?
I would like to know who will be the final owner of this property. It sounds to me like the Matsons will be the final owner of this property, but I mean that's, I think it's interesting to know. I believe it was an unsolicited proposal from the county to the Matsons to give them this land, but are they going to be the final owners? Are they going to maintain it, et cetera, et cetera?
I'm taking notes as fast as I can, y'all. So I'm gonna ask Mandy Cutman, Joe, and Jesus if they have any comments, and then I'm gonna go to, I'll go to Iris after that.
Y'all, y'all, I'll jump in. I guess I'm gonna, I'll go on the other side, not fully, of, of Iris with unpopular opinion. You know, when you talk about that power balance, I feel like it's gonna happen whether we want it to or not. So I feel like it makes more sense to try and drive it in a direction that's best for the Springs, and I think that is needing to get input from residents in the Springs. I guess for me, I just don't feel like spending hours and hours coming up with messaging that's gonna go on deaf ears is a, a good use of our time. I would rather push things in a positive direction than talk and talk and talk about the things we're upset about because we're gonna be upset about them anyways when it gets built and we don't have input, and it's an even worse scenario. Then, then we're thinking about it now.
Jesus, or Mandy Cutman?
Okay, thank you. Yes, actually, agree with, with Joe. I think it's gonna happen anyways. And I think it's very similar to what happened with El Mitote over in Roseland, which now we can actually see that's a great space for the community, where they did many meetings with the community, with the county, the developers. So I think that, and that's a good question that Hannah brought up to see who's gonna be the final owner. You know, at one point, at what point will the county actually be able to maybe maintain some kind of connection to it so that we can, so that they can advocate for the community, you know, I don't I don't think that they should give it up completely. I don't know if that's already, you know, said and done, but I definitely think that, you know, as Joe said, it's going to happen anyways. And we need to see what's the best thing that we can provide for the community with what's gonna be provided. Because I, I think it's similar to what happened in Roseland. You know, there are many, many conversations to see what was gonna be the best for, for businesses, for, and you know, it does, it, it is gonna provide a space for economic development for, for the community. It is. You know, for small vendors, you know, the churros, the tacos, people who's just smokes, sell one item. So I, I think that it is going to be a positive. The Matsons have already bought a lot of things, so we don't agree with many things. I mean, they just bought Duggans. But I, I hope, I hope that we can create a statement that is balanced with our different opinions and, and just look for, be able to move forward.
Thank you. Jesus, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, I will say that it might be also very unpopular, but I'll take whatever. If they are giving us the chance to get a plaza, then we should just, I know that we should go in, and, and I think that, yeah, right now, the conditions are the best. And yeah, perhaps the people of Valley of the Moon Apartments might not want the plaza there, but maybe they don't. So this is an opportunity for these people to attend these meetings and express their opinions, so yes, everybody should also feel welcome to be everywhere in the Springs. So that's my major concern. But I lost my train of thought, so if I can rethink about it, I'll be expressing my comments later, but that's so far.
Thank you. Iris, and then Joe?
Thank you. I am so skeptical that that the plaza would ever really be for us, for the people of the Springs. I've seen the drawings. It doesn't look like it's a great place for a group gather, you know, twenty or thirty people, yes. But certainly not a hundred. And to be honest with you, it's going to be right next to the the, what, what we call the post office building, that, that area that the Matsons have bought up, and I cannot really imagine that it's going to be a place that a low-income community is going to really feel welcome. That's not the kind of people he's trying to attract. He's trying to attract, attract well-heeled tourists. And we're not. I don't even know that I'll feel real comfortable hanging out there. You know, and I'm, you know, probably, I'm certainly, you know, I, I don't fit the really low-income demographic. I don't fit in much higher, but you know, I don't know that I'll feel, and I'm white. You know, and I'm old. I don't know that I, I would feel comfortable there, really. I'd feel like they'd want to hustle me out of there. The other thing is all of the problems that Susan Goran iterated last time when she talked about it, the gas, the electrical lines going through there, the possibility of water being a problem at the site, that there could be Indian burials underneath that would slow down things, well, would halt things until they could be thoroughly excavated. And that, it is right next to the highway. I, I do not know how how trans is going to greet such a development right there. There are so many questions with the, the idea that are associated with the idea of putting in an underground parking garage. And I would like to point out that that area was actually promised to the Springs as a plaza area. So in a sense, we don't own it, you're right. And technically, the, I, it doesn't look like the Matsons would. I'm proposing that we that they, that that we could receive money for a plaza to be developed elsewhere, and the Matsons could have that area with, to develop as, as they wished. You know, it, it, I think it couldn't be, it could be parking, it couldn't be an open street again, but I don't I just don't see how it's really going to benefit the community, and it's, and, you know, I didn't even think about all the dust and everything that, that Celeste was mentioning. It's also going to be a problem for all the other businesses and, and the people who walk there. Going, going to the barking dog, going to the post office. There are houses, you know, across the parking area that the Sonoma Mission Inn parks in. There are other homes in that area, small homes, apartments that are across the street.
Thank you.
I feel like we could swap it out.
I'm gonna move to Joe, Celeste, Jesus, then I have a couple of things to say, and then I'm gonna move to public comment. Joe?
Yeah, I, I guess, I just feel like we're kind of just spinning our wheels right now. This, these are meetings to get input, which I feel like means that the plan that you've seen or may have seen isn't what the plan is. We're being able to give the input to change it and make it what we want. In my mind, let's take these people's money and make it what we want, like the county doesn't have the money to do it. It's gonna, it's gonna happen. I mean, I feel like we're talking about two different things. They're talking about the plan of what it's going to be. And I think more so in my mind, our statement needs to be, we're gonna be there to listen and bring back what we hear to the MAC to have something, once it moves forward to the next phase, to really say like, hey, these are the pieces that were talked about. This is how we feel about it. Like, as far as the construction and all those type of pieces, we can share input too, but I don't think we have any power on that. I think that all makes sense. I think what y'all are bringing up are totally valid points. I just don't think that these meetings are the place or time at all for those pieces.
Thanks, Joe. Celeste?
Yeah, so I, I guess I would differ a, a bit from, from Joe in this, and then I I do think it's an opportunity for the MAC members attending this meeting. There will be opportunities in these meetings, there usually is, for questions and, and answers and input to take some of the concerns and, and ask them in the form of a question. So for instance, when I, when I bring up Valley of the Moon Apartments, I'm not speaking for the people in the Valley of the Moon Apartments about whether or not they want the plaza. I'm, I'm speaking about the obvious in that they would be subjected long-term to construction. And, and in the most direct way. Yes, there are other houses and other places nearby, but they're literally practically on top of it. And so they would be directly impacted, and they are members of our Springs community who are the most marginalized. Those are very low-income apartments with families that live in them, and there are children that are coming to and from school in and out of those buildings. I think it's fair as a MAC to ask the question in the meeting, what the plans are to mitigate construction. On behalf of that apartment building that is practically on top of the construction zone. So that would be an, an example. We do have money at the county for a plaza. We've had that money for a while. We don't need the Matson money to have a plaza. Do they own this area? It appears they do. Will they do what they wish with what they own? It appears that they will. It doesn't mean that as a community, we can't utilize our plaza funds in in a different way or in a different place or, or in a different manner, and I think that that would be a discussion that the community would need to have. But I think it's an important one for us to all be aware of. But there are concerns about safety, there are concerns about traffic, the, and, and traffic being impeded for a long term. There are concerns about construction historically with, with the Matsons beginning and then not ending and not continuing and being on hold, and everybody having to live in a paused construction zone. I think those are fair questions to ask in these forums. And I think that it would be the responsibility of us as, as the MAC to ask those questions and to receive those answers and share them out with the community.
Thank you. Jesus?
Yes, again, I'm just speculating. I would like to think that these meetings will be very important for the future of the plaza. There or somewhere else or in the hands of the Matsons or not. But if they, if it happens that the plaza will be there on the best, Sonoma's best, Ken Matson's company, then I would like to see that the message, the Springs MAC's message had something like accountability as one of the main words. And so that accountability in regards that we really want to see the plaza, and we really want to see the plaza soon. And we don't want to see any halfway constructions. If the plaza were constructed there in the hands of them and the county if, or somewhere else, and yes, I'm just hoping that, like, we should allow this for the community. And just take what the community do, do, does, decides. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah, and I'm gonna take your final comment.
Yeah, this was just a point of information for, kind of based on what Celeste said. I just want her to know that, and Karina, correct me if I'm wrong. The county owns those parking spaces. They were not purchased with the purchase of the, the post office building. The county is giving those spaces to the Matsons as part of this deal, so that's my understanding. So it's not, it's the Matsons being given something by our county government, I guess, in exchange for this development.
Yeah, it's sort of a land swap of if the, if the Matson group could develop a community plaza because there was interest expressed from the community. So they're working on developing that community plaza based on what they heard from the community, and these meetings are, like Joe said, to hear what the community sees as a plaza. What would they like to be? What would they like to see? And I understand all these concerns, and I'm, I'm neutral here. I'm, yeah.
So I just want to say a couple of things, and then I'm gonna go to public comment. So the beauty and the not-so-beauty of being the facilitator of this is I get to hear everyone. And I try to create, try to create the space for you all to speak. And then I get the luxury of listening to all of you, but then I also have to put it all together at the end of the conversation that you've all just had. And while I agree with everything, my concerns, I could talk for the next two hours about my concerns about the Matsons. Without, without a doubt, their stance on communities, vulnerable communities is not one I agree with. It's actually one I fight against pretty much on a daily basis. So I have, I could chime right in with you all very easily. And I do, and Iris and Celeste, your concerns about the Valley of the Moon's apartment and the power imbalance, absolutely one hundred percent with you on that. I also agree with what Jesus is saying about the accountability piece. What kind of guarantees are we gonna have if we enter into this transaction? What are our guarantees? And to Joe's point, this is likely gonna happen. So how do we make it the best scenario possible for us? How do we get something for our community that we've wanted for a really long time? And Iris, people may not feel welcome there. It's absolutely true, without a doubt. But I believe that that plaza should be one for families, and that's what it should look like. That's, it should be a place that we, that I would bring my granddaughter to. That's what it should look like. And how we get there, I'm not sure, but the questions that you're asking should be asked at that meeting. What's your guarantee? What's the traffic gonna be? What's the traffic gonna look like? How are you- How are you gonna protect the communities that are, the communities that are living? Those are valid questions. And Celeste, you're right, you go in and you ask those questions. And when you say them in a public meeting, they're being asked. And now there's a level of accountability that needs to take place. But at the same time, we do need to say what we want that plaza to look like. Because it, it may happen. And what do we want it to be? So I'm gonna stop there and um take public comment and we'll come back and come up with what we wanna say.
For members of the uh public who wish to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if you called in. We will acknowledge you and allow you to make your comment. I don't see any raised hands, Charity.
All right, thank you. Oh, I did forget to say this part. I think you're all brilliant and I love how diverse this group is. In your thinking and your just your will, you just are, you bring it all and I thank you for that. All right. So we have some questions that we want answered, or we, at least we want asked. And Karina, how are we gonna capture this so that people have something that they can refer to when they're in these meetings?
Um I think that the three council members who are part of the ad hoc should be taking notes on this. Um we will have our minutes. I don't know how quickly our minutes can come back. Usually it takes about a week for um Lynn Marie to send us the minutes. I do believe you'll have the minutes in time for these public meetings.
I could Xerox my Post-its for you.
I'm also taking, you know, some notes, but um I think between. Everyone's individual notes and then I I would suggest that the ad hoc meet. And compile all those notes and review the minutes so that they make sure that the messages are. Uh captured and delivered on the day of the public meeting.
Is Lynn Marie?
Um, I think I can summarize these by tomorrow.
Okay.
Or a couple of days, it won't take long. It's, you're you're like Joe's pointed out, there's a lot of repetition.
We're passionate people, Lynn Marie. Um so is there anything that we want? So we know, we have some questions. Valley of the Moon Apartment, I'm just gonna repeat them again. Valley of the Moon Apartments, uh kids getting off buses in a construction zone. Um, the, the level of accountability of how long is this gonna take? And will this be something that's gonna get paused? Also, uh making sure that pe- that people feel welcome in that space. Um oh, the fire exit, that's gonna be like, what's that gonna do to? People being able to exit the valley in an emergency. Um, I think that, I I think you should mention the power imbalance. I I think that's a legitimate concern. Is who's the decider here? Hannah, did your hand go up? Uh you're on mute, you're on mute.
The power imbalance has been created essentially with the county as well. I don't feel like it's fair to just ask the Matsons. They just looked into it, so.
It's generally, it's an overall power imbalance. Okay, Hannah, Marty and Joe.
Charity, I think you meant Iris, Marty and Joe.
Oh, I did, sorry.
Thank you. We look different. It's okay. Um actually, I'd like for you to throw in Caltrans. I I wonder if anybody has uh has approached Caltrans. Um, there, it's it's their highway out there, actually. And also there is a bus stop right there. Uh in in basically in front of the, what we call the plaza area, as well as the school bus. Thank you.
Marty Kardman?
Uh pedestrian, pedestrian safety of the um crossing walks on Gregor. On Boys Boulevard, Vallejo and Central Avenue. Um those concerns of those crosswalks, that signage be put enough that people can read it in um. At least in Spanish and English and that they're visible both and uh during the day and at night.
Thank you. Joe?
Uh I I mean, uh Hannah, Jesus and I can talk about this offline too. I think, yeah, I think asking questions is great, but I think we also need to point out the fact that we are there just as much. To listen to the community as the developers are. Like I think that's our biggest piece, honestly. Um we have our own opinions. I have not gone out and talked to the public about what their opinions are. This will be really big for me to really understand what folks in the Springs want. And that's what I'm hoping we'll be able to bring back to the MAC to discuss the points that we really want to get behind.
So, thank you for bringing that up, Joe. So to that point, my, um is there gonna? So if we go into this session without having. Is there an opportunity for us? What do we do? Write a letter after all of this happens? That's supportive of the community or are, do we need to express our concerns, questions, hopes and dreams in these listening sessions? That's to you, Karina.
My understanding is that um you can provide public comment as a council. And any member of the community can also submit any comment to the Matson group, whether or not you get a response, that's out of my control. But just like you submitted a letter, you know, a comment letter for the SDC project, you can also submit one for this project. And I agree with Joe that these are listening sessions to hear what the community has to say about. The future of this plaza, if and when it is developed. Um, so you can do both. If you decide, you can have, you know, an item on your next agenda in November to write a letter. Um your next meeting will happen before these public meetings, so you will have an opportunity. If you decide that you want to assign the ad hoc today to write a letter and then approve it at your next meeting, if you so desire, it's really up to you. The beauty of this is you kind of have the power to decide how you want your council opinions expressed.
Okay. Okay. Joe?
Uh I do, I do think it, um regardless of what we wanna do at these meetings, I do think it would make sense for uh. Ad hoc, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to put work on people's plates, for us to come together after the listening sessions. And and put together some sort of draft, like I said, the the big highlight things that that we feel. Um, we wanna get behind. Uh and that can be more concerns and questions as well, but I think we could have something kind of drafted together the same way. Hannah and Iris, you came back and said, here are the roads that we feel through our conversation need the most help. Um I feel like we can do something similar. We still have to give a full overview of what we went over. And that's, you know, at that meeting, the things that maybe the three of us decide from listening to the community. Um, we feel are the biggest points. Uh doesn't mean it's a final draft and we can. Continue altogether, but that's my thought on on these pieces.
Karina, will that work with the timeline? Cause that wouldn't be able to go till, until the December agenda?
I'm sorry, I had to step away. Um so Joe, you're suggesting to.
Write a letter after they send the listening sessions. So that would be the December MAC meeting.
Right, and I would think about it more as that letter to go um. To be on that table for whenever that third meeting is in the new year. Kind of summing it all up for that big piece that we get to um in the new year.
So, hold on a second though, I, maybe I misunderstood. I thought that at that. That third meeting, that's when they're bringing the proposals forward.
Correct. So these two meetings in November are just listening sessions. They want to hear from the community. What do they want at this plaza? Do they want, you know, benches for people to sit? Do they want? Uh vendors to have the opportunity to sell products. Um do you wanna see a little playground? What is it that you want to see? And um they will take all the input they receive at both of those listening sessions. Sometime in early twenty twenty-three, they plan to have a third meeting. Where they will present three uh options based on what they heard from the community.
So at the December, so my, my point in all this is the December meeting would have to finalize a letter. Because otherwise we possibly run the risk of not getting our feedback heard.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Marty Kardman and Joe, does that fall in line with what you're trying to say?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And I think in that same vein, after that third meeting, when the plans come. I think at that same time, if there's anything that we're even in line with, um we can have another letter going along with. Proposed plans at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think right now my biggest um concern or recommendation is. How do we get the word out to the community that we get them to these listening sessions now? Because now is going to be the time where they say what, you know, what the community wants. So what is the possibilities, you know, in terms of the ad hoc and then as the rest of the council? Can we do like individual, like invitations or getting the word out? Can we do canvassing, like firing in the community? Like we need to get the c- the community to these events because if there's the the events, but there's no people attending. Or they didn't know about it, then what's going to be the point? We're gonna have all that missed opportunity.
Good point. Is there a, is there, are these solid dates? Are they being advertised anywhere, Karina?
They have not officially started with the promotion or advertisement, so the Springs MAC has the first. Um take on this. Um and I agree with Marty that you guys have the opportunity to promote these meetings. And get the community to um express their opinions.
Okay. Um, is there more, are there more co-? We have uh someone who's raised their hand in the public, Karina. We did close public comment, but. It might be worth listening to what MacBook Pro has to say.
Yeah, happy to take them in. Um and I would, you know, tell the community in the council that keep an eye for. Um I know that we will get the flyers, the flyers will be out hopefully soon, just so you all know. This Friday Supervisor Goran, Supervisor Goran is meeting with the Matson Group and their facilitator and other county representatives. To sort of finalize details on these meetings, so there will be more details to come. Um but the MAC definitely has the opportunity to get prepared for these public meetings. I'm happy to go to public comment, I'm Charity.
Thank you.
Um. The individual with MacBook Pro, if you can please unmute and state your name for the public uh record. And Charity, how much time would you like to allocate for this public comment?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, thank you. They disconnected.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I wanna summarize what I think I've heard to point. The ad hoc committee will meet um maybe prior to the meeting, not sure about that, but definitely after the meeting. To construct a letter that they will bring forward at the December MAC meeting for us to review. As what our input um is to the um plaza design. Based on what we're hearing from the community as far, and as our input too is important. Um, that December meeting will vote on the letter and move it forward to the Matsons. In addition, once the three choices come out, if one of them aligns with what we've identified as important. Um, we could add an amendment to our letter. In the letter, the first letter we write, we will ask those questions that we all have very strong, I think that's really important. Um while I believe in telling us, telling, um providing input on what the plaza should look like. I also believe that we should ask these questions because they're important questions. And I believe that there are other community members out there that are feeling the same thing, so. Um, is that accurate? And we have Jesus, Hannah and Joe representing us. And anybody else who wants to go is welcome, but you may not participate in conversation with those three folks. Okay.
Charity, I just wanna recap. Um the next steps are the ad hoc is meeting before your November meeting. And at your November meeting, they are coming up with a statement to present. Um to the council to be approved. This statement will be read at the public meetings on November fifteenth and November seventeenth. Based on the information that is presented or collected from those public meetings. The ad hoc will come to um the December meeting with a draft letter. To be approved at the December meeting. Is that?
I was not sure about whether I got, I picked up different signals about us saying anything at the meeting.
Okay, so your council will simply observe the meetings, they will not make a statement at the public meetings?
I'm not sure about that. That's a good point of clarification. I kind of feel we need to, but.
I would like to make a statement and I, I wrote down the concerns that we all came up with. Um, can I read them shortly, quickly? I mean, if we all.
Shortly and quickly, both of those things.
Can 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 we, I mean, if they're, if they're good, could we agree that this is what we wanna say? Um so it is impact of construction on people and traffic, accountability timeline. Who will feel welcome, evacuation concerns, power imbalance, um family focused place, Caltrans bus stop concerns. Pedestrian safety on Vallejo Boys Central bilingual signage during day and night, and we should be listening to the community to get their feedback. So if we all agree on that, we can make those what we represent as our MAC concerns.
I'm gonna go to Celeste and then we'll come back and um, we need, do we need a motion on the statement? If that's the one we're gonna read, okay. Celeste?
I think mine was more of just a a question. Uh would it be so much a statement? At the um meetings or would it be more of a list of questions that the MAC representatives would be bringing to the meetings?
I think it could, I I think it could be questions, it's less, uh it's, it's a more collaborative way of approaching the situation.
And it represents our concerns.
And I, who knows how they're gonna run the meeting too, right? Are they gonna, are they gonna have you write things down on a Post-it and slap them up on? I mean, who knows how they're gonna run the meeting? But those could be the agreed upon questions that are asked and we do, and we are including that we want it to be a family atmosphere and we want. Space for community to gather, so. Okay, if those are the agreed upon points to this um. From this meeting, then we can make a motion to use those as the points that you all will express during that meeting in one way or another, whatever that format looks like. Um, and then we have a plan on how we want to put something officially in writing, once we hear more from our community. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay. Um Hannah, do you wanna read those again and read them into a motion?
I seriously just like lost them in my document. Um. Uh, I can't read them anymore. I, oh wait, here they are, here they are, okay. Impact of construction on people in traffic, accountability slash timeline for project. Who will feel welcome here? Evacuation concerns, power imbalance of the decision-making. Uh will this be a family-focused area? Concerns about Caltrans, have they been discussed or have they been brought into the discussion? Um there is a bus stop along twelve and a school bus. Concerns about pedestrian safety on Vallejo Boys and Central, there should be bilingual signage visible during day and night and we should. Uh this was just more for us, but that we should be listening to the community to to collect their concerns.
Uh I would like to add that uh you should add um concerns regarding the people that lives in Valley of the Moon Apartments. And kids getting off on construction site, Hannah.
Okay, added.
Is there anything that you want to add about what you want to see in the plaza?
Trees. Trees and pretty plants.
Some plants.
Bentures, some benches.
Benches.
Comfortable shade.
Shade, a climbing structure. I want a kid's climbing structure. I want there to be like a small stage or something for people to be able to have, you know, events. I don't know, I think I would include those too in what we're, to make sure that we're adding what we do want to see.
A bathroom.
Oh, yeah, bathroom.
Bathroom. If you want kids and old people, you want a bathroom.
Okay, all right. Anything else we would want to add?
Um, some sort of uh, safety fencing, again, I'm sorry, like gotta like mom radar if we're going to have families and kids.
Yep.
Is on the highway and there has to be some sort of safety structure between the highway and the plaza.
100%.
And of course, AD accessibility.
And I also, to your point, Celeste, I also think you need that on the other side of it too, because people go rolling down boys pretty quickly as well. So it does need to be, it needs to be enclosed.
Yeah.
I mean, and as, and it is, in as a beautiful way as possible. Cause that's, it is planted between two pretty high-speed um, roads.
That seems like would make it feel more, more comfortable too. By enclosing it a little more private, you know, a little more intimate. Since it's a small space.
Okay, that's great. I mean, we all have, I think we all have kind of a similar vision for what we want to see. So I think it's important to include that. We have concerns, yes, and those concerns are there front and center, but they're also what is it going to look like for us? Okay. Okay, so it sounds, are we in agreement on what? It sounds, do we need a motion? Yeah, my conscience right there in the middle of the screen. Yep, you do. All right, so Hannah, I don't know if you've got it all, but maybe you can uh, make a vote. Okay.
Do, wait, do I have to read them all?
I think you're going to have to.
Okay, so the motion is to, I guess, formalize our concerns and what we want to see. And what we will convey during these first two listening meetings as Springs MAC representatives, council people. Our concerns about the project are the impact of construction on people in traffic, accountability and what timeline they will stick to. Who will feel welcome at this new plaza, concerns about evacuation um, during construction. Concerns about the power imbalance created by this, the players in this decision. Um, will this be a family-focused area? Has Caltrans been talked to? And there's also a bus stop along 12, including a school bus. What will be done about pedestrian safety on Vallejo Boys and Central? Will there be bilingual signage uh, that is visible during day and night? Uh, we, we also have a concern that we listen to everyone around us during the meetings. And specific concerns for the people affected by the construction in the Valley of the Moon Apartments and kids getting off buses. The things we want to see in the plaza are trees and plants, benches, shade, a climbing structure, structure for kids. A small stage for events, a bathroom. Some sort of safety structure between the highway and the plaza, and also between Boys Boulevard and the plaza. And an ADA accessible environment.
Okay, uh, can you add, I motioned that that be our?
I would motion that we use that as our um, our concerns and talking points. Thank you.
Okay. Joe seconds, all in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, nice work, y'all. Okay.
Move to adjourn?
Yes. Well, is there anything else? There's nothing else, right? That was the end. Okay. Yes, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would motion to adjourn.
I'd second that.
Okay, Iris, Hannah, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you again.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Karina. Bye.
Thank you.